Called to order the regular meeting here at the City Council, City Ransus Pass, 600 West Cleveland Boulevard, September 21st, 2015, at 7:00 PM. Please all rise to your location, please.
Lord, I'd like to give you thanks for another beautiful day, for all the blessings you've bestowed upon us. We ask you to pray for the ones and watch over us, the ones that have lost love with us over the weekend. Please show them your grace and be in their hearts at this moment of need. We ask you to watch over all our public works, our department, our police department, everybody that works so hard to make the city grow and to move forward. We ask you as council people, please grant us the grace to do what's right when we come to votes, to think of the whole community as we have been doing. We ask you to watch over our young children as they're in school and take care of all of us. Thank you, Lord, amen.
Amen.
Let's lead us to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
This is going to bring us to item number three, presentations and proclamations. Quarterly presentation by Becky McMillan, interim executive director of San Patricia Economic Development Corporation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Becky and I am the interim executive director for the Economic Development Corporation. I'm here to give you a little update on our organization and some of the events that we have planned going forward. What's going on with the EDC? What's going on with the EDC? We have, our Board of Directors have formed a search committee. There is, we hope to have a new executive director in place by the end of the year. We are hosting our annual event as usual this year. It will be on October the 22nd. We are honoring engineering firms and construction companies. We hope that everyone will plan to attend and participate. This, in July, we hosted a job fair at the San Patricia County Fairgrounds. We had 650 job seekers. We had 50 companies that were hiring and we were able to, 30 job offers were presented at that fair from our sponsors. So we feel like it was a very huge success. We've got positive feedback from all of the sponsors and all of the attendees and we are hoping to have another one in the near future. We're working closely with CCR EDC, Port of Corpus Christi, and some of the other entities as far as job placement, business retention, business development. As you know, on October the 31st of 2013, our organization was awarded a grant from EDA. This grant was to help us do a comprehensive economic development strategy and a feasibility study. The draft of those two have been sent to EDA in May and we are just waiting approval for those. Once approved, we'll be able to present them to the cities and to the counties as well. Also, we were able to update our website. We were able to get it online in August. We were also able to hire a new staff person, a GIS person, Mark Van, who's sitting in the audience now. And basically what we were wanting to do, which is in the scope of work of the grant, was to compile a data, a data clearinghouse as far, as far as all of the zoning, water, sewer, infrastructures of all the cities. That way they would be in one place. So when we had companies or interested parties wanting to look at these maps, they would be in one, they would be in one place. I've included some of the maps in the presentation here. This is the county commissioner's precinct. This is the current Aransas Pass zoning map that we have. This is a city of Ingleside zoning map, Gregory's Water Lines, excuse me, Water Lines and Fire Hydrants. So we would like to be able to have the information from Aransas Pass so we can add this to our database as well. Also, we were awarded last year $150,000 DAR grant, which is a job access reverse commute grant. Basically what this will be doing is looking at the traffic patterns along Highway 361 with all the congestion is, doing origins and destinations of current workforce and for the workforce in the future. The primary concern for this was the safety and secured workplace availability for the construction workers. Basically what we were wanting to do is to make sure that everybody was getting where they needed to be and able to get home in a safe manner. We will be able to submit our FPs within 60 to 90 days, do the selection, and then start our surveys, start our survey, yes. What's going on in our county? We have industrial growth, manufacturing, energy, commercial, tourism, and residential. These are the $20 billion worth of industrial development that is coming to our area. Within the region, we have $35 billion dollars worth of investment coming to the surrounding area. That's impressive. Sylvia just informed me that y'all were on a boat ride and firsthand access to Cheniere this weekend, so we will just skip that slide since y'all already know about that. TPCO is on track as far as their numbers go. Their still startup date is fourth quarter 2016. They expect to add more construction workers after the first of the year and they are moving right along. Boston, we had a meeting at their facility last week. They are on track. They actually were able to hook into the grid as far as their electrical goes. So they were, they're on permanent grid now, so they are up and running. They're on track. They will, as far as their construction, that will taper off after the first of the year, once production starts. Oxycan ethanol expansion, that's the ethanol cracker plant, 1.4 billion, 145 jobs, 45 permanent contractors. They broke ground in December and their project will complete their existing facilities, start up estimated 2017. The condensate facility for Cheniere, I'm sure y'all heard about that, so we'll skip that as well. I just wanted to include some commercial developments. There's truck stops, there's been the Stripes, South Texas Athletic Center. There's an interest from a major grocery store on the west end of the county, Smolik's Barbecue on the west end, Dog Park in Portland. Of course, the Harbor Town, 700 million mixed use development, Discount Tire, various retail facility, retail coming to our area, expansion as well. Lungstar Hardware in Portland has plans to expand their facility to accommodate some of the, some of the supplies and things that the construction companies will need. Residential, here's a field of residential information, Napoleon Development. Most of, some of these are on the, would be on the west end of the county. James Templeton is doing some projects there in Odom. Brazelton is doing homes, some homes in Portland. They've got some apartment complexes. Gregory has the Amy Unit Apartment Complex in the works as well. Basically the San Patricia EDC role in all of this and basically what we, our scope of work is, is we are assisting the cities with housing, special projects, working, networking with the communities to see what we can do to, to help the communities as far as any of those entities go. Like I mentioned earlier, we're coordinating with the CCR EDC and the board on some of the large projects. We're primarily focusing on the support companies to the existing, the existing projects that are already on board. Basically, we're telling our story as I'm doing tonight, coming out to the communities, talking about our organization, giving out information. We're interested in the infrastructure. We're supporting infrastructure proposals from some of the cities. We're very interested in helping, anything that we can do to help the cities, we are more than about ready to do that. Moving forward, the San Patricia EDC has an open doors policy. Please let us know. I know in the past there's been some issues floating around. Please let us know immediately if there is some issues with our organization. That way we can address those as soon as possible. If we don't know there's an issue, it's really hard for us to, to fix that. We are, you know, our intention is to be as transparent as possible regarding our operations and development. We are here to serve you. We represent the San Patricia County and that includes all of the cities within the county. So, have any questions, concerns, I'll be glad to answer any of them.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
The council does have a table at the annual event already, since it's being held in our civic center.
What time?
What time is the event?
As far as the six.
Thank you.
I have, I have a question. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry. Is there any more, is there any more job fairs that are being planned in the future?
We've been approached by an organization to go in with them to host another job fair in November. What happens is we, we will present this to our, to the board for approval and if it's, once approved, then we can proceed with planning of that job fair as well.
The reason for my question is that I'd love for y'all to use our civic center.
Okay.
You know, I think it's an awesome place. It, it can give you even more than what you can get in Portland or in Centon. So I'd like for y'all to consider the civic center here in Aransas Pass.
Of course.
Hosting a job fair.
Of course, absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure.
This is going to bring us to item number four, Boarding Commission Appointments. Item may be planned in zoning commission. If I read this correctly, we have, in terms of three commissioners, the planning zoning commission have expired, which is Richard, Sandy, Cuba, current vice president, vice chairperson, Kathleen Swett, and Donald Brummett. Mr. Brummett said he wished not to be reappointed, but we do thank Mr. Brummett for his service. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. So that leaves us, Ms. Swett, Ms. Cobett, and Ms. Elizabeth Doris to submit the applications for appointment. What is the consideration of the council?
Well, I make motion that we appoint the three applicants to the board.
Second.
All first say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
This is going to bring us to item number five. It's our citizen comments. Please state your name, your address, and you have exactly three minutes to state your business. Floor is now open.
We have a new podium.
I see that, that's good.
I'm Hope Cummings Gore. I live at 326 South Atlantic Street, near the end of the harbor. I would like to make a comment that deals with the harbor lease that is coming up under executive session that maybe Richard might not mention. In addition to the amount of money that he's put in to rebuild that bulkhead, there's a lot more repair that has been discovered to be needed. And I am saying that there's been a longstanding problem at that location. A few years ago, the city installed a water service, or fixed water service, I'm not sure which. But they dug across the road and they put in water on that dock, on the pad. That water was hooked up for use of the leaseholder who had a large boat there, if any of you remember that. He was there for several years and he had a hose that was hooked up to that city water that constantly leaked. I don't know that it was ever fixed. I don't know that it was ever addressed. It should have been noticed by anybody driving by that it was always wet there, a big puddle in the middle of the pad. It's my feeling that some of that water that was constantly there helped to wash out underneath the pad. Now, he's fixed the bulkhead, but there's still a big hole under the concrete. And how much can he do there? How many vehicles can he park on that pad before someday he's going to come back from a boat run and find his trucks down the hole? It should have been noticed by any number of people who go there frequently, who go by there frequently. I noticed it. I didn't report it because it wasn't my business to report it, okay? The city should have noticed it. They had plenty of time. And I'm just saying, consider that when you're looking at what he's asking for. He's still got a lot of repairs to be made. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to make a comment?
Evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Bill Denton, business operator here in Aransas Pass. Alan Samuel's Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram at 877 South Highway 35 High Path. I come to you today on behalf of the newly formed Tri-City 100 Club. For those of you that are unfamiliar with 100 Club, Harris County is probably the largest one in the country. And the Harris County Sheriff's Office Deputy Deputy Goforth, Darren Goforth, that was killed in the line of duty a short time ago. The 100 Club was built to support police officers and their dispatchers, jailers, et cetera, within specific communities. And you have people that pay a hundred dollar or higher, that hence where 100 came from, each year membership fee. And that money is collected to help officers and officers' families in the event that they were killed in the line of duty. To give you a good example of Harris County, what Harris County does, they offer immediate money to the family in the amount of $25,000. It's a much larger area, as you know, as you well know, with millions of people, so it's easier for them to do that. But that helps because insurance takes a very long time to kick in. That way there's, they can have, help with immediate expenses that are incurred in the, in the event of a death. Also help with tactical equipment, also help with other things, uniforms and other things that smaller communities and smaller municipalities have to pay for, or where the city pays a portion, the officer pays a portion, the 100 Club is designed to help that. To give you a good example, if you had five to six officers whose vests, ballistic vests, were in need of replacement based on date and the city paid X amount, the officers paid X amount, then they could come to the 100 Club and ask them to help. It's citizens, it's businesses, anybody can be a member. We, the Tri-City 100 Club, has been readily supported so far by the local police chiefs here in Aransas Pass, in Ingleside, and in Gregory. Those are the three cities that make up the Tri-City. It's a volunteer organization from the private sector, benefits our local police agencies, is managed by a local Board of Directors. I have been elected as president of that Board of Directors. Pretty excited about that. We have a meeting scheduled on September 29th at our dealership. We're asking the city, its citizens and the elected officials to support us fully as we strive to show support for our local police agencies in the city of Aransas Pass, the city of Ingleside, and the city of Gregory. There's somebody like me at the other two city council meetings, spreading this news to you. And I'd like to schedule time in the future to address the city council request of resolution of support by you. If you acquire additional information, please you contact me or ask me now. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Number two, we're the fire chief. I want to let the council know that back from next month, I will be retired from the city. After 34 years, I'm retiring from the fire department. October 31st, may official is my last day. I want to let the council know that I appreciate working here. Those 34 years has been a long time and I've enjoyed every bit of, and enjoyed working there, all the council and, and that's great.
Ricky, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to make a citizen comment this time? If not, this is going to close our citizen comments and we're going to continue on with the meeting. This is going to bring us to item number six, the consent agenda. All of the following items of the consent agenda considered to be routine by the city council will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council members so request. If the discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda, will be considered separately. On these, on item six will be A, B, C, D.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All first say aye?
Aye.
This is going to bring us to item number seven, considering that on the city manager items, A, B, C, D, E, and M. Sylvia?
Quite a list. Mayor and council, the first one is the, I'm asking the council for direction on amending the record ordinance. It was an item that was brought up in discussion. I'm just asking for a clarification on whether or not the council desires to have me amend.
The only thing I'd like to see possibly is just if we take five of our closest cities and just see how they do their impounds. You know, whether it requires, whether they, they have to be in that city or not. And if, if not, you know, if all of them don't say it, then I, we'll just leave it as is.
So just poll?
Yeah. Pretty much a poll, yes, sir.
I was just kind of wondering on that also, is there any way that we can ask the current record services that are in our town? Just, you know, kind of have them give some feedback on that, just to get their ideas, not that we have to, you know, just to hear them out. They're the ones that are actually doing the work and see what they have to say in terms of, you know, just, you know, any concerns they have, you know, and, you know, just overall their opinion.
I think we've heard their opinion.
I'm just thinking, just, I'm just thinking, you know, we didn't have Lamas that was here and some of the other ones. So we're just giving them all the services town, just to kind of have their.
Do we have their addresses and stuff to, just to give a heads up?
Yeah.
So the next council meeting is slated for October the 19th. We can have that information.
All right. So we'll move that item.
Do you want, Nikki, you want any record of their business or those that are on our rotation?
The ones that are in the rotation, the ones that are in the, in the city. I, I thought, are they all on the rotation?
It's the E and J, the runner, and then the one from, the one from Cora Ranges.
So we only have three or do we have more?
Three on rotation.
So Lamas is.
And I, the only one I have not spoken with at all by the unit is Lamas, so I'll have to reach out to them.
That's what we'll reach out to them. So we just tabled that correct now? Yes, please.
I'll make a motion, we table item 7A.
Second emotion.
All first say aye?
Aye.
Bring us to item seven, be considering that the support of H.T. Falk Elementary, early childhood school, Fall Festival.
Mayor and council, this is simply a request from Falk to.
Mayor Council, this is simply a request from Falk to support their early childhood fall festival. So, I'm looking to the council for an amount that they'd like to see supporting the fall festival.
What is the normal? Have we done it in the past or not?
We have not supported them as a, as a city in the past, but I think five hundred dollars is appropriate.
Do I hear a motion for approval, five hundred dollars?
Well, I make a motion that we support the Early Childhood Development Fall Festival in the amount of five hundred dollar monetary donation.
Second.
All the first say aye.
Aye.
This brings us to item seven C, considering that on canceling the city council meeting of October fifth, two thousand and fifteen.
Well, Mayor Council, you have a full October. We've had a full September, and I apologize for that. That's just kind of how the budget goes. October the twelfth is our tentative joint council school board date. I have not had a response from the school yet. I've sort of just thrown down the gauntlet and said, that's the day. That's their regular school board meeting day, so we may meet at the school board, and we'll, we'll give ample notice. The nineteenth is a regular council day, and then the twenty-sixth is the second reading of the annexation ordinance. So, we will definitely have three meetings in October, so it would be nice to give you at least one off. Plus, given the fact that I will be en route back to Aransas Pass, it really would be beneficial.
To all concerned.
Yes, to all concerned.
Well, I make a motion that we cancel the meeting, the council meeting of October the fifth.
Second the motion.
All the first say aye.
Aye.
This brings us to item seven D, considering that on approving the Aransas Pass Chamber of Commerce Budget and Publicity Tourism Agreement.
Mayor, you have in front of you, you should have your, your itemized budget. Basically, the chamber receives seventy percent of all hot funds, which amounts to about a hundred and seventeen, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We budgeted a hundred and seventy-five thousand in the budget that you adopted last week. The chamber's actual number is a hundred and seventy thousand. That's, you know, of course contingent on those receipts being received by the hotels and the hot funds. We did find a discrepancy in our financial audit. Our auditor found that we have about twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars of fees that are not being paid by local hotels because of their classification. So, we're going to pursue that as well. So, that might change that number a little bit, but it's within the range that's in the adopted budget.
I hear a motion for approval for item seven D.
Mayor, let me, let me interject that in addition to the budget, you're also being asked to approve the annual publicity and tourism agreement, which is an annual.
Correct, Alan.
Contract, and all we're doing is changing the date on it. It's.
So, for routine?
Yeah.
All right.
What was that again?
That we're also, we're also not only approving their budget, but the, the annual tourism agreement.
Oh, okay.
Okay, well, I make a motion we approve item seven D.
I second.
All the first say aye.
Aye.
This brings us to item seven E, considering that on extended the Windstorm RFP until Wednesday, September thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen.
Mayor Council, we did go out for a request for proposals. The city had to give an inventory. We just finished that inventory. We're a little bit behind, so I'd like to extend it by a week to give folks an opportunity to bid. The city of Portland went out for, just so you know, our, our insurance folks have not gone out. We, they have us in the normal TWEA pool, just like everybody else. Our rates are higher than what I think we could get in the open market. Portland was able to save more than thirty thousand dollars a year.
Wow. I hear for a motion for approval for item seventy.
Hello, I make a motion that we extend the Windstorm RFP until Wednesday, September the thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen.
Second the motion.
All the first say aye.
Aye.
This brings us to item seven F, considering that on awarding the RFP for parks and mowing services.
Well, Mayor Council, as you're aware, we did go out for RFP in an effort to not only consolidate services, but to assist our local nonprofits. We did have the, the winning bid for the majority of the work was the Aransas Pass VFW. They bid five thousand dollars for both Newberry Park and the VFW area. They bid five thousand for Veterans Memorial and thirty-five hundred for Siemens Memorial. And this is mowing, weed eating, and edging services. The medians at Goodnight and Harrison, Rudy Abrego was the low bidder. Newberry Park was tied with Aransas Pass VFW, so staff recommends awarding it to the VFW. Roland Penya submitted a bid for twenty thousand dollars, but he was, it's an invalid bid because he believed it was only the softball portion, and it is not his community park in its entirety. Cornerstone Lawn Services, their bid was over a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars for services all-inclusive. So, at this point, we'd like to award the VFW, the Newberry Veterans and Siemens, for an annual cost of thirteen-five, and Mr. Abrego, the medians at Goodnight and Harrison, for twenty. I am asking, well, we're going to re-advertise for the community park, Harbor Park, and Harbor Point Park, as well as Lighthouse Lakes. So, there is ample opportunity for our nonprofits still to provide us services, even in the downtown area.
So, for Mr. Abrego, is that included in Newberry Park also, or?
No, it's just medians at Goodnight and Harrison. He was tied with Veterans, he was tied with the VFW, so the recommendation is going to be to give it to the VFW.
What about Cornerstone Lawn Services?
They were not the lowest bidder on any of the projects, and in fact, those, those numbers that you see, they're rather high.
They are assigned, if they get hired, they started to waiver?
Yes, they will have a hold harmless. They have to present their insurance, do their background, et cetera, et cetera.
So, do I hear a motion for approval?
Well, I make a motion that we approve the VFW for Newberry Park, Veterans Memorial Park, and the Siemens Memorial Tower, and Mr. Rudy Abrego for the medians at Harrison and Goodnight.
Second.
All the first say aye.
Aye.
Any other?
I abstain.
This will bring us for item nine, considering that on development service items, which will be planning A and B. Sylvia? Miguel, I apologize.
Mayor Councilmembers, you have an item before you to amend the zoning ordinance to establish time limits. Right now, there are no time limits. It would require our staff, once the application is completed, to board the planning commission for their review and approval within forty-five days. It also states in there that the planning commission has to make a recommendation to the city council within six months of their initial hearing. And then it requires the council to take final action on a request within six months from receiving from the planning commission. It also establishes refiling time frames. Right now, somebody can come in and pay their two hundred dollars and refile the following day after the city council has approved it, and continue doing that on and on. But this proposed ordinance amendment would require them to wait at least twelve months from the last action. And if something changes, they can come to either the planning commission or the city council to ask for a waiver. And if that waiver is granted, then they would pay a hundred fifty percent of the application fees. Questions?
Why six months?
I'm sorry?
Why six months from the, that it takes that long for a planning commission? Just a question.
The, that's, gives the, the planning commission and the applicant time if there's any issues, like the penny dollar store. Gives us the planning commission and the city council to work with the applicant, for the applicant to, you may want to direct the applicant, go talk to the neighbors in case of controversial case. But at the same time, you know, we've got to put a time limit, because there are times where the applicant may drag his feet and say, yeah, I'm going to go meet with him, meet with him, and, and then.
Never happened.
And never happens anything, and that just, just clear the books and move forward with it.
Okay, so, I understood it took the, for it to, for us to make a decision, the plan and the zone is that it would be six months?
Six months from.
Before you come to us.
Before it goes to you. And if they cannot make a recommendation, then it comes to you with a recommendation of denial.
Okay.
It's going to come to you as fast as possible.
Yeah, I was just kind of wondering on that, six months, that would be like dragging our feet or something like that. So, okay, but it can take, it can be quicker than that.
Because the third cost storage, that, that took a while for it. And that would put the onus on staff to make sure that planning commission moves along as well as the city council moves.
These are grounds to follow. Is there any other questions for items nine A from the council?
No.
Do I hear a motion for approval for item nine A?
I make a motion we approve item nine A.
Second the motion.
All the first say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This is bringing us to item nine B.
Item nine B is amendment to the city code of ordinances, is to add some development service fees. It's mainly zoning application fees and replating fees. Currently, the maximum zoning fee is two hundred dollars, which doesn't even come close to covering the cost that is incurred by the city when somebody makes an application. By state law, in a rezoning case, we have to provide notification to all property owners within two-hundred-foot radius. We have to publish in the newspaper. Not only do we send out notices for planning commission.